...a police employer commission, which is his hiring and firing responsibilities for the police department. They also have honor in their policy, they have committees, commissions, excuse me, call them commissions. They have approximately 12 commissions. They call them commissions, so I was confused by that. But they're in their policy, they have a plan commission, of course, they have a recreation commission. And talking to trustee in Western Springs, who is willing to give us any feedback about this, all of their videos are online. They also have live meeting feeds of their commission and committee meetings, we like to view them, how they operate. And they are resident participation. They are not, there is nobody on the commission from, I think there's a facilitator from the village, but there is no person that's more of a resident. And she gave me an example, street signs. There is a safety commission, street safety commission, and if residents have a street sign they want to request, they go to that resident commission. They don't have standing meetings, they're at, they're as needed. So they will have a meeting as needed for the street sign example. And they will meet, I think it's publicized, it's a public, you know, they say they're gonna meet. And then they make recommendations to, for the street sign issue, they would go to the public safety committee that the two trustees set up. And they make the recommendations to the committee. Then the committees, which they're set up, make the recommendations to the village board on what they want to do. So the committees meet twice a month. I don't think we have to do this, of course, we don't have to do exactly what they're doing, but all of their work is done in committee, is from what she told me. So everything is paddled out between this commission, committee, and then it goes to the village board. So their meetings, she said, are down about an hour. They had a huge public works infrastructure upgrade for the last four years, which was reverse osmosis, there've been huge issues with it. A lot of that work was done in committee. Outside, you know, and that's subject to open meetings, it's subject to all of that stuff. So that's just what I found out. I don't know if it fits, if it doesn't fit, but I wanted you to be aware of that. And she said all of the minutes of these different entities and the codification is all online for you to take a look at.
Trustee number one, what do you see as the role of the finance committee of the village is creating?
Well, there's a couple of things. We were talking about bonds, right? I would look at them as helping with, aiding in the assistance of the budget creation process, not necessarily doing the work, but being there to help, look at it, evaluate it, maybe not through the tactics, but through the review. Like this year, when we could've had, you know, somebody looking at Excel sheets and just checking that, we had a great citizen identify some issues with that, which we appreciate, but that kind of stuff. In the bond area, we have several people that we've identified in the village that have municipal and other types of bond experience, they could lend a hand in that area. We have that same experience in our school district, and we try to raise money. So to me, they're there as a guide, as a, as a help, especially if they're subject to matter expertise. The one reason of doing maybe a commission, one thing that I learned from the trustee is, then you can have multiple residents give input to, in your commission, to the committee. That was the only thing that she suggested is maybe to look at. So like, if you wanted to be part of the commission on the bond side, you could help us with that, and then they would make the recommendations to the committee. So those are just some of my ideas. I looked at Western Springs, you know, there's many towns that have these positions, I think we have to agree to how we want to manage it here and what exactly possibilities they have. And I think we can come up with a list. Same thing with, you know, on the-
I'm sorry, I got-
Same thing on, you know, with the communications committee, I think all of these, we have to really put down all of the different responsibilities, what they, they don't, what they do and what they don't.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have questions, comments, or suggestions?
I'm not convinced that we need a finance committee as such, but I would have no objections to bringing a maximum of two people from the outside in, sort of on the committee. And these two people must have some kind of a financial background, just the financial in general, not depending on any certain trade level of finance. Something to do with finance, much of their career, all.
I read.
Go ahead.
One of our residents could not be here, she's at LT on an open house, surely Yang 11120 Glen Book Lane. She asked that I read this short paragraph. "I believe forming a finance committee that comprises members of the village staff, board, trustees, and village residents is not only an excellent idea, but imperative given our fiscal situation and constrained, constrained resources. Having said that, I also think before any resident members can be appointed to such a committee, the role of resident volunteers should be clearly defined to ensure the committee is equipped with members who have had the type of skills and experiences the village needs. Our village is fortunate to have a number of residents who are able and willing to contribute their skills for the benefit of our community, and we would be remiss to pass up such a great opportunity. Lastly, I believe complying with the Open Meetings Act and responding to potential FOIA requests should never be a reason to reject a productive new initiative, especially in the case of forming a finance committee where the benefits should far outweigh any extra time and effort."
Audience, questions or comments about the concept of establishing a village finance committee? You've heard the input, my recommendation is the six-member committee that involves two, two non-elected officials, along with two trustees and two staff that work on, you know, basically Frank is responsible, it's the village administrator, putting it together, and uses the help of the, to get to that point, along with, in the past, the primary and the backup finance trustees have worked on that. So in order to try to be responsive to the suggestion, I'm open to that, and where, you know, I've been, I recorded what my research showed, so comments?
Just one, I was just wondering if the village treasurer shouldn't be sitting on that committee as well? I don't know if that constitutes some sort of-
Well, I know that there's interaction between Dave Frank and treasurer, you saw, I'm not opposed to that. I think my, you know, my view on there was that the treasurer looked after the money that we had, made for the accounting and so forth, in terms of, you know, what I envisioned, the finance committee would be the help with creation of the budget and moving forward. And we could get to the point of what trustee Whittemore had mentioned about help with the, you know, bond expertise, for example, being, you know, something that they can get into, and I think the treasurer has some experience with that as well, so. Thank you. Anybody else?
Andrew, Mayor 21 Stoner, I'm just gonna say I support the idea, I think the more residents you've got involved, the more, more people then learn about what the village is doing and who gives the referendums, thanks.
Anybody else?
Sharon Allison, 6317 Keel Creek. I kinda like what Amy is talking about here, this committee and commission thing. And I like what you're saying too, mayor. But, you know, I think maybe there should be some kind of discussion, maybe behind the scenes or whatever, about her particular proposal, what she has discovered as far as what's going on in Western Springs. It might be beneficial to us. So maybe rather than making that decision tonight, it might be something that could be further mentioned, future discussion.
I appreciate your input, and we can talk some more, get, do some more research, and come up with a dynamic, and continue the discussion next month. If you have a preference.
I agree, because I think we have to figure out, we can form a committee, that fair. What the job of the committee is, we need to discuss on that.
Okay. Just a discussion item anyway, so I will state for the record that we will continue the discussions. And what I would ask the trustees to do is, if you take some time between now and the next meeting, actually sometime over the next two weeks, and give some serious thought, and jot down some ideas and guidelines, and basically, what I'm asking for is, what would you like to see for your vision? And submit them to me, and if you care to drop it off, you can send it by email, but get it to me so that I can then take what appropriate next step, to let everybody else know what the input is, and she prepared, we'll discuss it at the next meeting.
So vision of the finance group, or whatever, is that right?
Yeah, specifics is, Ms. Allison mentioned her support for the commission committee. Quite frankly, I have to kind of get my, my head around that distinction between commissions and committees.
I had to read the policy. It's on the website, and I wasn't, I didn't see that anywhere else, so I'm just telling you, it's on the policy. It gives you the duties, definitions, and all the information there. I didn't have time to download, download all that and print it out for you. But it's all on their website, I'm just sterling part of it.
Okay, trustees? Yeah, all right. We'll go to, just so you know where we are, it's getting, you know, the hour's getting late, but we have two more items and then comments from the audience. However, good news is that Frank already gave you the report about the M.O. Ash Cores, so we're gonna now talk about the Heritage Center lands. Trustee Walsh had asked us to have this discussion prior to the meeting, and I don't believe this was put on the agenda. I'm sorry. You're right, you're right, thank you. Communications committee, trustee Hinchell.
Thank you, Rich, for putting this on the agenda. I will be very quick, I promise, I know the hour's getting late. What I'm looking for from the board is a thumb up or thumb down on an idea, whether it's called a committee, a commission, a group, a town hall, I am not tied to any naming, but what the concept, what I'm looking for is to get anybody in the village together to talk about what we're doing good here in the village in communication, and maybe what we could do better. I think there's inbound communication, there's outbound communication. Ideas like a survey, email notification if something changes on the website, a Facebook page, you know, these are just ideas that I have, I'd like the committee of our residents to think about and talk about, you know, what they're looking for. And I know some cost money, but some don't cost money. And over maybe four meetings over a year, or two months apart, again, open to everybody to try to establish what the community is looking for. So that's it, in a very short nutshell, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'd love to get a thumb up or thumb down from the board, whether this is an idea to pursue or not.
I ask a question of council, if we, we just made a committee, and let's say we had the idea being we'd have a trustee involved in meeting, having a meeting with residents to come in, as trustee Hinchell explained, for, you know, input and output, you know, what do you, what do you think, what would you want to bring up outside of what, you know, people can still do at board meetings? Would that be, and hopefully use that type of committee, that you have to, you know, have the publication of notice in the minutes? With one trustee?
It's not so much the one trustee, it's if you have designated people from the community who would form, who would also be on the committee. So when you make a formal structure of a committee, that's a subsidiary of the village board, then you're subject to the open meetings act. If it's just one trustee inviting residents in to give comments, I would indicate that's probably not subject to the open meetings act.
And had like the trustee, a trustee there to be the moderator, and perhaps, you know, liaisons of some by the commission also?
Although, you know, if, if, like the residents, you probably do want to provide notice so that everybody knows, if it's not subject to the open meetings act, you're probably still gonna wanna post notice that you're gonna have this type of meeting to solicit comments from here.
And if, as, let's say I'm the moderator, and everybody comes to participate in this discussion, does that mean then it isn't a formal meeting? You know, if, 'cause I wouldn't want to say none of the boards would come, that doesn't sound right.
Well, the issue is whether it's a subsidiary body. And the Open Meetings Act says that any meeting of the village board trustees or any subsidiary body thereof is an open meeting. So the more formal you make this meeting, the more you're putting yourself within the parameters of the Open Meetings Act, which requires notice, agenda, and meeting minutes.
One suggestion, mayor, I think Tom is the next one idea, maybe it can be accomplished by, if we have one board meeting sometime in the future where we don't cover 25 things, we just talk about that issue.
Maybe for a half hour or something?
We don't, we don't, we have one thing on the agenda, we can spend an hour talking with the audience about that one issue, we could all be here, that could be the board meeting, and we could probably accomplish the exact same thing.
Yeah.
I think sometimes the problem is, we all, we had 25 things on the agenda, and we're all brain dead by the time it gets out, so.
Yeah, good point. And I don't know that it has to be a committee, and I certainly don't see it being a set group, you know, it's not 18 people, but anybody, who can come.
Community involved.
Yeah.
We get a board meeting, we get a special meeting, however you wanna do it, and then see what comes out of it, and then, you know, we may not even do anything.
Right, maybe a one-time meeting.
Could be.
Having heard this for the first time today, I think we all would like to give some thought to it, and I won't say untable it, but we will, we will come back to this on a, in a future meeting, may not be next month, otherwise we're gonna be here this late with these umpteen different issues to go through.
Thank you.
I, I am interested in that as a political term. We're not gonna go to audience and put on that, we'll, we'll take it up again, we'll discuss it. Heritage Center lands, trustee Walsh had asked for some discussion, this is an offshoot of the discussion we had previously concerning the park hours, open hours of operation at Sacagawea Park, Arrowhead Memorial Point, and so forth. And last time we had the inclusion of the Heritage Center with that, and we shouldn't have been there, we took it out. That led to the discussion of Heritage Center land. If I recall it correctly, there was also some discussion as, well, what about the land next to the building? What is that? Is that a park? Does it need to be named? What will be the hours of operation? What it's for? And I think that's why you asked for us to have a discussion, which is why it's on the agenda tonight. Now, I had asked Kathy to research, and she found, 'cause I, I talked to her prior mayor about the property and his recollection, and he said there was something like a resolution or ordinance out there that actually dealt with this, and that he did find it for me, appreciate that. And in fact, there is, there was a resolution in January, excuse me, I think it was December of 2001, that led to an ordinance, O2-1, entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for the Official Landmark Designation of the Property of 6250 South Wolf Road in the Village of Indian Head Park." To summarize it, we've already taken action on this, from my perspective. The village in 2001 has designated the building, the land, and the area around the building at 6250 South Wolf Road as the Indian Head Park Heritage Center. So for people thinking of, what do we name it? What do we call it? What do we call that open lane? It's already got a name. It is the Indian Head Park Heritage Center, the whole thing, parking lot, the building, the land to the south of it. So that's done. And the second thing is that the board designated it as a, as an historical, declaration of landmark status. It's a landmark, property of 6250 South Wolf Road, including improvement, is hereby declared to be an official historical landmark, sealed to the authority vested in the village by section 11-48.2-2 of the Illinois Municipal Code, codified at 65 ILCS 5/11-48.2-2. So it's not a park, it's not vacant, you know, just an empty lot, it's not designated as open land, 'cause it's still in an R1 zoning district, but it's an historical landmark. And I talked to Jane Coon last night, and she told me she agreed, she recalled this, and she said, in fact, her understanding, and I didn't have a chance to follow up with our office people, always friendly, but Jane advised me that it is on the registry in Springfield as an historical landmark. So to the extent we need to discuss anything more about it, I, you know, I'm here to, I know there are no sense, and we're gonna come to the audience here momentarily, but in terms of, are we gonna say it's a park? Well, I don't think it's our, unless we're gonna undo the wheel and try to do something else, and I don't know what the encumbrances to that process would be, but it's not a park, it's an historical site. And it's already designated, and the only thing I could think that might be open to be done, since being public property, the public has right to access the property, would be to do what we did for Sacagawea Park, Arrowhead Memorial Point, is to perhaps, we know when the building is open, now we can perhaps designate officially, 'cause I don't think this has been done, is what hours, if somebody wanted to bring a couple of lawn chairs and sit under a tree in the vacant lot there in the summertime, when they could do that? So that's, that's the background, that's how we got to this discussion item, this is what we already have done, we did this back, you know, in 2002. So trustees?
Thank you, mayor, I appreciate the information. I guess I would recommend that trustee Lachlan sent a permission, since she is the park's trustee, that we designated similarly as, for Sunset, Sunrise to Sunset, so that we're consistent about the village.
Trustees? Okay, and then I will get to a motion to do that, but let me open it to the residents and the audience, any questions or comments? You know the background, you were here last month, you know how we got here, anybody have any questions or comments about that?
I have a question, is this just, or is the sunrise-
Could you say your name, please?
Phil Coleman, 129 Kishah Circle.
Thank you.
Is a designation, Sunrise to Sunset, for the building and the land, or just the land?
It would just be the land.
Just the land.
The building obviously has its own hours.
I just wanted to make sure.
But that would give the police department the right to enforce that rule during dark hours.
Has there been a problem over there?
There is not, but, you know, we just want to be consistent about the village, since we designate the other parks with the same terminology, Sunrise to Sunset, which makes us the one that's consistent.
Black Hawk Park is Sunrise to Sunset?
No, Black Hawk Park was not.
Okay.
Last, at the last meeting, it was strictly Sacagawea and Arrowhead Memorial Point. And the other property, Black Hawk has its own hours, it's on the website, and then this was the open issue, so. Any other comments about that, regarding the open hours on the vacant land, the open land? Chair would entertain a motion to direct council to prepare an ordinance to designate the hours of operation for open land around the Heritage Center, to change from Sunrise to Sunset.
I will make the motion.
Motion, and second by trustee Lachlan, all in favor, signify by the same time.
I agree.
Close. Okay, we've covered that. We're on Heritage Center, no sense, anybody have any questions or comments or input regarding the Heritage Center? I think that would be appropriate time. Okay, there are none, then we move on.
Mr. Mayor?
Hold. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. I have a question. I, I'm toward the Heritage Center, and Frank, and just to go check out if everybody was into, in the Heritage Center. And yet, but I have a concern, because out in the basement, there is moisture, there's water, it's getting water there, and I have a concern because of the mold, possibly mold growing down in the basement. I mean, when you walk into the Heritage Center, it smells musty. It's not because it's old, it's an old building, but it smells musty. And it's, I have a concern for the safety and the welfare of anybody that is going into the Heritage Center, and to see what, what type of action, or what we need to do in order to correct that situation.
Well, one thing we do have on the plan, and I, I have to go through, I'm gonna see if it's a short term or a long term, let's see what the foundation, a lot of it, I believe, I had a discussion with Tom about this, 'cause we've got kind of updates on information on the Heritage Center. It's just the musty smell of this, as of what we're smelling, so, dehumidifiers are there, but we do have, I suppose I would come out of town hall, yeah, it's under the five, ten-year plan, I suppose when we get to that discussion, we'll, 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 we'll get to the coverage.
Is there something I think would be easy to ask about?
Well, our public works, I actually love to see if there's something specifically wrong right now.
I think basically, if I'm next, I kind of might correct, it's just secrets from the foundation coming into the Heritage Center.
Yes, it's a Black Foundation, it's 100 years old.
We have dehumidifiers.
Needs to be top point.
We have that on the plan.
Do we have dehumidifiers in there?
We have, we don't want to have.
They don't, they're not doing it all. Does anything else that you want to do each street?
Trustee, all we can ask is them to take another look, but, you know, maybe make a recommendation, if you see something, or say that's what it is, and the only fix is to do the, 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 fix it. Sad factors?
Well, yeah, my concern is just for the taking of work, being a dosent there, or anybody that comes in to, to the-
Take another, go, get a chance, take a look at it. And was there anything? Okay.
Jean 711217 from Pumsta, just to add to knowledge about what's going on with the water, we did have a toilet overflow on the second Saturday of August, when I was a dosent there, and it did smell a lot. The rug was pulled out, one of our maintenance fellows came over on his own time and took care of it that day, but I don't know if that's contributing to the problem in the basement or not, but I know that it contributes to the odor.
Right, no, this was prior to there.
Okay.
Over here, and then we'll go over there.
Mary Urina, 6402 Arrowhead Court, what role, if any, does the Heritage Center Foundation play in helping fund restoration, repair, maintenance of the Heritage Center?
What role does the-
There's a foundation that-
Oh, I'm sorry, we were just talking about the foundation item.
Oh, no, not the, not the, no, not the, not the bricks and stuff.
I'm sorry, folks, you know, I, I don't know, I posted my bad time, but, I apologize, I was, I couldn't get my hand up on that one, but, okay, yes, there is, they pay, they pay us rent for, we, they pay us rent pursuant to, at least, for the upstairs part of the Heritage Center, so that money comes into the village, and that helps us fund the operation for whatever our costs are. I can't quote the exact, I don't know.
$225 a month.
There was a, I'm sorry.
Just, I was gonna add to what-
Okay.
And, and Mayor 21 Stoner, the foundation itself raised money to help pay for the renovation of the siding and the new roof, so they, besides the rent, they also raised money to help.
Yeah, thank you, I forgot, there was, when we had fixed the, some of the structural things, and then had it re-sited, and the windows that were put in, there was some additional work that was added to the windows upstairs, and I think shutters, and the foundation donation to pay that additional sum.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact, but, wait.
Ms. Kivich?
Sukai, we want to, I want to record, one very quick question, the 10-